Okay, there we go. All right, we are up and running. Okay, I'm following us to order at 6:36. If everyone will please rise for the pledge. Thank you. Next item is public comment. If you are speaking, please put your name, address on the list on the podium. And I don't know if anyone has signed up already. You have three minutes, so.
My name is Caroline Mary. I live in 21 Grand Road. And while I was here on the Bethany Board of Education, I am speaking tonight concerning Bethany resident and mother. So I've started doing some research how Connecticut towns in Connecticut responds to town employees who commit hateous crimes. Specifically, possession of child pornography and and there's going to be two actions that officials take that seem to be pretty standard procedure. One is when they find out when there's an investigation, the employee is immediately placed under restricted leave, prohibited from returning to the workplace upon returning to the investigation. And then number two, they inform the public as soon as notification is received that there's been arrest. Paula Francisco did neither. I had with me a few articles that I tried writing for the section one, but I'll always speak at the first one because it's the most recent. In the middle of August 2016, there was a case in North Grand Road where a woman was charged with possession of the town manager said that when he entered the investigation, the police approached him and said that he could not go public because they didn't want to compromise the investigation. So while they did not go public at that time, they did place the town employee on administrative leave and prohibited them from returning. So on July 23rd, during the town meeting, attorney Vincent Marino stated he first learned of the Mass Grand Union matter a couple of months ago. That would mean that attorney would be alerted the Mass Grand Union case in May of 2024 or thereabouts. In fact, Mass Grand Union was first arrested on May 24th. Bethany Town Constable Dave Marion allegedly approached Paula Francisco at the spring play event at UCS on May 24th, 2024. And he notified her allegedly that Mass Grand Union would be arrested at that very moment. I could stop. In that Mass Grand Union was arrested on May 24th, 2024, Bethany Town Constable Dave Marion allegedly first called Paula Francisco at the spring play event held at the Bethany Community School on May 24th, and notified her that Mass Grand Union would be arrested at that very moment. Even though Dave Marion stated at the town meeting that it's not my investigation, it seems to me that simple actions that should be informing Paula there was an arrest opposed to consider that notification actionable information. If it is true that Paula Francisco knew of the first arrest, one, why didn't she, why didn't she immediately notify the town on May 24th, 2024? At that point, it was public information, although the news did not reach our small community until the associated press picked up the story on June 26th. We, the Bethany residents, were shocked and horrified when the allegations began to mass grandiose and the subsequent second arrest for the first time when it was broadcast on the evening news. And two, also in a news negative article, the town manager stated that as soon as he was aware, the library was doing have an arrest of action was taken to inform him. He further assured that while he cannot go public in the work of the investigation, he placed the employee on administrative leave and were prohibited from returning to the town hall. Here in Bethany, first select on Paula Francisco stated in two different letters posted to the town paper page on June 27th, 24th, and June 24th, as well as at the special town meeting on July 30th, 24th, that if Marion continues to talk the whole involvement, Mass Grand Union was still removed from the children's environment. Paula Francisco confirmed that in the same special town meeting that Mass Grand Union continued working at the town hall, including careful to be cleaning out for the parks and rest department which is located inside the house. While Paula stated that there are other parts that occurred when new children were present, it cannot be overlooked and can still be pulled out from the town hall. We don't see how Paula stated that no contact with any children was substantiated and there were no cameras inside town hall. It was led by our husband, William, at Hall five, personally, who was driving him, she had not gone. We don't have Paula stated that the county can confirm that this individual had not any contact with children under our Thursday, December 2022. Remember, it still had no impact. Paula allegedly refused to allow cameras to be involved. It has also been stated that cameras might not installed in some kind of good way. It was being granted, was the truth. Why does Mass Grand Union think on administrative leave is prohibited from returning to town hall? Note that two pages in paper stated in the DCL community letter on June 27th at 10:30 in the morning that following those of the public who have reported related to Mass Grand Union is immediately placed on DCF and have not worked for all of their school visits in the number three room, and none of them returning in any capacity. Attorney, we have the county attorney, the town's best manager. That includes taking every measure in the state to protect our children from predators. Local attorney for meetings, obligations, who had followed the immediate action by notifying to be able to get it in. Further, the special town meeting on July 3, 24th, when questioned about Department of Children and now involvement, both attorney Reno and Paula Francisco stated that they both did not know the nature of the complaint. It's on Who Afford Video Recorder. So it sounds like this is the reason they are saying the town was never known before. I would like to, I was speaking before, having that just before, we would like to refer everyone to DCL policy, chapter 22, I'm sorry, chapter 22, that's pretty national definition of the town defense law. If DCL could respond to a complaint, it involves some kind of abuse or neglect. Everything listed in the per view of this policy, which includes sexual abuse, are things that can trigger a DCL investigation. You would have to be looking over throughout and extremely out of touch not to realize that if DCL was involved, it's pretty horrible. In our opinion, Paula Francisco did not use the quote nature of the complaint in order to take immediate action and protect our children by placing Mass Grand Union on administrative leave, revoking his access to town hall, and prohibiting him from returning. Paula contacted the DCF anytime to ask for status update. They would not give us the different information about the investigation, but as to the point by the town, DCF can confirm whether there was an open investigation or not. It is patting out as to be that Paula did not deliver the power to protect our children. That is not only unacceptable, but it is also a question. Let's go on. I just kind of want to point out that I know that this connection by Paula and the town attorney that the mother's previous administration is the cause of this. I just want to mention that we, they're looking strangely, but we have heard it. And but for the record, they're looking shocked by that piece of information. So maybe that's not, that's just rumors I've heard. But what I want to say is, I lived in the town while my mom was running the town. She could have done a terrible job, but I do know that she was not a liar and she was not misleading people in any way. And so, and Paula and this administration has been office long enough to be in take responsibility for the results of all of this.
Is there anyone else? So, I'm sorry. Yes, Jeanie. Thank you. Don't mute yourself.
Good. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Jamie Sterling, 20 Miller Road. Good evening and thank you all for serving and for having public comment. I was interviewed today by the Hartford Current about the signs in Bethany. Since you can't control how a reporter might spin your words, I would like to share what I told the reporter. I support all residents' right to express their opinions unless they advocate hate or violence, and yard signs are a small town tradition. I said, I personally think that Selectman Co. Francesco should resign because as tonight's agenda makes clear, we are spending a lot of money to correct mistakes. Common sense tells us that new leadership will more effectively and probably less costly deal with this mess. And I told him I would prefer to see signs that say accountability matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that do the last one?
I want a small, small two is just a number of the public. I'm Gina Texera, otherwise known as election three.
Please silence after speaking as a president.
I just want to say briefly that, you know, this, I actually don't do the investigation when it was reported in the home. And that was a totally shot, my daughter, who was in the summer program, and it was chilling to think that I could be so involved in the town and not know that this is anything at all office. And so I waited a couple of days and then I sent an email to Paula that she, I think, has since forgotten about. But I think, you know, even though I was mainly prepared at that time, my first instinct was to try to help her, believe it or not, to back her up, that she, I mean, right when we struck, we can't, but I did on a feel bad on her and I tried to help her. And I, the first thing I did was to give her advice and I told her that she should apologize. And that was, she was kind of up to me heads up that first time that we had the media and cameras here. And she told me what she was going to say and I was really horrified. I said, you're not, you have to apologize, right? That's the first step in the bringing home. I don't know if, anyway, since then I've heard that trying to give Paula advice didn't work and she didn't listen. And I think that advice, you know, even though Diana was saying to Kelly, it was really on a human level, just trying to give her the advice. She rejected that advice and said, make a lot of excuses that night in her statement. And one of the things that I wanted to say is that it's irritating to have someone refuse to take responsibility when it's so easy to do. People do it all the time. Just because she refuses to take responsibility. And, you know, the final thing, she, she has made a statement in Bolton. I think she, I think she maybe came to some pressure that people, people mentioned that there hadn't been a statement. And I just want to point out something at the top of the second column where she said, and she's referring to December 2022, but she said that at that point, the town was legally and ethically bound not to comment in open investigation. And I just want to say, you, like, we're all being gassed, right? Because this is not about allowing you to have an investigation. And I, you know, I mean, I think a month ago she apologized. What was the apology for? And she's totally case of that. First step of the client's meeting when the town attorney said she did everything right and Paula will not correct him. And then they have this bulletin that says she, again, refusing to take responsibility and claiming that she was under a legal obligation to stay silent. And I'll say to you, that's bullshit, okay? Because everyone knows, everyone has heard that you can say, not commenting on the next patient, you know nothing about her. She could have said, we have found that the investigation, you took the actions, you took your child's sake. That she could have said without doubt. Start by giving excuse to Paula.
Okay, this is all the one anyone in the room. I just want to point out that not everybody has received that, that they voted. I have not received it. A couple of people have received it. I don't know what happened. All of a sudden, in the past two months, we haven't, I could have gotten one when I basically get it everywhere. So now I have something happening about everybody.
The printer is the one who does the mailing. But I'm just, I'm telling you a fact. The printer mails the bulletin. That's an issue with the post office. Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have a series of minutes. July 31, special meeting, manning motion to accept.
This is July 31st?
Yes.
Okay, no, I have some.
Well, we need to second and then discuss.
Sure.
Okay.
So second for discussion?
Yes. Okay, one page.
First of all, I think my name is spelled two or three different ways. And so I asked that the name be corrected.
Okay.
So that's the first thing. I mean, I could point it out if you want, but I think if someone does.
We'll go through, we'll go through.
It's correct at the top, the first page. That's correct.
Okay, we'll go through and double check.
Okay.
Throughout the document.
The, in the, in the second paragraph, Selectman Texera requested to make a statement prior to getting into the agenda. The second sentence, I just wanted to ask for clarity, which is what I said at the meeting. Selectman Texera proposed that item number three, by labeling, by labeling it just legal was insufficient under the rules of freedom of information.
That's what you want to add?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, I think this is a typo in the bigger paragraph, second line. It says, first selectman Cole Francesco has inserted herself into some situations and that is an issue.
With that, that probably, yeah, that.
And, right, and that.
Oh, and that.
Change that to that. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then my name is spelled wrong a couple of times. If you go down to.
We'll double check the entire document for this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So you don't have to pick out each one. We'll go through the entire thing and make sure it's correct.
Okay, then if you look at the third, the third paragraph from the bottom, Selectman Texera stated while in executive session. This is confusing to me when I read it. It sounds like attorney, it sounds like the town attorney is talking to people in executive session. Yeah, I mean, I said that while we were in executive session, you claimed to inform people. And that was explained at the time. So I don't know if.
Let me remember to say, town attorney left, left the meeting to advise the public, right? Because that's what I did.
Yes.
So, which is stated that while in executive session. Yeah, so.
You know.
So you might even just say at that paragraph, Attorney Marino left the meeting to inform the public.
Yes.
Well, I didn't.
Well, you said something about her not being recused during your break, and that's what I think about.
Yeah, but that would have been part of this meeting.
Wow.
Right? What I said.
But this, this is what Gina said at a previous, at a previous meeting about referring to a meeting even before that.
So I'm talking about how I learned that Paula was recused.
Okay.
Because someone in the audience.
All right, so, so if there's stated that Attorney Marino informed.
Left the meeting to inform.
Well, well, Attorney Marino stated to the public. Or.
In the gym, maybe.
I don't, I understand that.
See what I'm saying? Because the way it's written is really confusing, but I don't want to.
Attorney for, referred to a statement made by Attorney Marino concerning.
Right, right. Maybe take out the executive session. Yeah. That, that's, I think that works, that works a lot better.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, so it would be.
Selectman.
Selectman referred to a statement made by Attorney Marino to the public.
All right, hold on a second. Referred to a statement. To the public.
By Attorney Marino. Concerning Select.
That she was not recused. That is the information that is new to me.
I guess it's kind of, is not recused from what?
I thought she was fully accused. That's when I found out she wasn't. Right. So, so that's based on what I was just.
She was not recused.
Right.
Period.
Right.
The second sentence, first.
I think the second one's okay. Yeah. Okay. I think there's more. Do we, are we okay?
Well, I want to make sure we have that sentence correct.
Okay.
Selectman Texera referred to the statement made by attorney, made to the public by Attorney Marino, and then does it pick up?
By Attorney Marino that Select, first selectman Cole Francesco was not recued.
Okay, so that's.
Right, it's all the same.
That, right, okay, all right.
So the rest of the page is okay.
Okay. Okay.
This, the second page, the Selectman Texera paragraph. This, I'm not going to force everyone to write the minutes the way I actually made the statement because I think it would take too long to kind of make it accurate. But there are some real inaccuracies in here. So for example, this says Saturday, July 28th. I, I don't think Saturday was July 28th. I just want to make sure at least that part of it is okay. Yeah, Saturday was a 27th. So, okay, so, Tickle there wanted to add to the minutes that I wanted, I basically wanted people to know that I sent, I was, this whole, this paragraph is talking about, I wanted to outline my attempts in correcting the agenda that said executive session legal or something like that. And I had been trying to correct the agenda and no one was getting back to me. So my first email was Thursday, July 25th. That first line is correct. And did not respond. And then the third line, it says.
Should be the 27th?
The 27th.
Okay.
But there's, there's something, it's, so I wanted to say, to avoid delay, did not receive a response until Saturday, July 7th, from the, from the town attorney. But this isn't what I said because I did not receive a full response that day. I received a partial response. And then, so I think if you just say that she received a partial response on the 27th.
Do you want to like type up what you think this should?
I mean, I, I could, I could do that if you think it would be easier. Because I have, you know, I still have my notes with me because I was really wanting to just document the five or six attempts I made.
All right, why don't we table it so we can get clarification on that? And in the meantime, we can get your name corrected.
All right. So can I send my draft to?
Maybe if somebody could send Gina in, but if you send it in like Word, then you could.
Oh, yeah. Then I'll do a track change.
Yeah.
And then you could see if you guys can see.
All right, we can, we'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, Jen did for these minutes. So I'll have her send them. One of us will send them to you.
I think after that, there's not a whole lot more. That, I think that's the main thing. So.
All right. So why don't we have, we've already got a motion to discuss, but why don't we amend that motion to table? If you're okay with that.
It wouldn't be an amendment. It would just be a motion to postpone.
Okay, motion, motion to postpone until, okay.
So motion to second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so we've tabled this until, not a second. All right, next minutes are the regular meeting minutes of August 6th. Motion to approve. Wait, what's the date?
August 6th, the second set of, of minutes on.
I think I have something here too. Well, let me see if it's. Oh, oh, there's, if you look at the very bottom of the side of the first page, I made a motion to have part of the discussion with the labor attorney in public session. I made a motion, Bob seconded the motion, and you, Paula, you said no, you just, you disagreed. So it was not a unanimous approval on that.
I don't recall disagreeing.
You don't?
I mean, I don't know why I wouldn't, why I would disagree to have the questions.
I don't either. No, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't disagree with the executive session. You disagreed with having a conversation within an open session.
But you wanted just general questions. Why would I, why would I?
Are you saying you agreed? Because my recollection, I looked over and you were shaking your head and you said no. Bob, do you remember?
I don't remember which way the ball went.
Okay.
Did you?
I mean, it was.
I, I took the minutes. Now Gina could be correct. That could have been two separate motions regarding amending the agenda. And I may have missed it and combined it into one. I can look back at my notes, but Gina could be correct. I don't have them with me.
Should we table this?
Clarification on the.
Is there anything, I'm just curious if there's anything else in this one?
I didn't have any other remarks. I don't think I missed. Said in that.
I think that. Right, so motion to table. Second.
Second.
Okay, we disable these to October as well. We had the August 15th special meeting that was, was.
Um, move approval.
Another second. Yes, I second, second that. Corrections? No.
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 And I like the fact that it got on one page. It was a good summary.
Okay, well, it's kind of.
He didn't want to, he didn't want to do a transcript or not.
Okay, we have approved the August 15th minutes of that. Okay, we have approved the, uh, August fifteenth minutes of that. Uh, we do have one tax refund, which was left for me. It is, uh, for a Joseph and Cynthia Nadoo. Uh, it's an excess payment and it's eleven dollars and twenty cents. So can I get a motion to approve the tax refund?
So moved.
Second, second. Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Uh, we have no cemetery deeds for approval for this month. Uh, Russell Road.
Just to update selectmen on this, uh, so one of the owners of the fee interest, uh. Uh, filed for chapter thirteen bankruptcy. Uh, and so the issue with the closing Russell Road has been on the seller's side. And that's clear and tight up. When they subdivided this lot out, they never actually got releases from the incumbents, like the mortgagees and whatnot. So, uh. It appears. And I, I've spoken to attorney at Belito and waiting to get, uh, back, uh, to me on, uh, where they're standing their side. But based on my review of chapter thirteen bankruptcy, it appears as, uh, part of the debtor's plan or the seller's plan is to. Uh, first, they've, uh. They've assumed the contract, so in bankruptcy, within sixty days, your consumer reject a contract, they assume the contract. And they intend to proceed with the contract, but they're, I think, gonna be utilizing the bankruptcy court to try to get rid of these needs. Because they probably are having issues with the, uh, lenders. But that, that's my best guess, because that's why you would use the bankruptcy to strip the, the earnings from the property. Uh, but I'll keep you informed, uh, on that, but I'm, I am waiting to hear back from attorney.
And the, um, proposed solar farm, we are just waiting to hear if it's close, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Shot is not that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Simpson Property.
I am working with, uh, attorney Francois on, uh, advancing this matter, uh. And the higher rate of suspension, you know, today, uh, I've been touched by Alison Clark from deep and, uh. Uh, we are. Hoping to, to add this matter to his calendar.
And Paul, can you just remind everybody what the Simpson property issue is and why it's on the agenda?
Well, it was, it was started prior to me. It was with two grants, Audubon and, uh, deep. And, um, so we saw that it was still waiting, you know, to be closed. And then we found there was another issue with the Carrington property preserved that had to have some title cleared. Um, so now it's basically went to the attorney general. Well, Carrington has closed, that is clear. The, uh, Simpson piece has gone to the attorney general. I'm just waiting to hear back.
Right, so where it stands right now is, I believe the, the grant, uh. Approval, I believe, or the, the grant agreement, I believe, is being referred to the attorney general's office for review and, uh. Uh, consent, once that is back, then we. Given to the town, uh, for execution, uh, and then once it's executed, uh, in total, it takes about four weeks to fund it. So, uh, I'm told it's about two to three years to come back from the attorney general's.
And what's the amount of the funding?
Yeah, two different, about two hundred and. I mean, both grants cover a hundred percent of the acquisition. I believe one was about two, I'm gonna say two fifty and one fifty for round numbers, but I can give you the specific numbers.
No, I, I can tell you somewhere. Thank you, that's good.
So. That's where we sort of stand with that. We hopefully, like you said, look for the calendar years, uh, we finally see some closure.
Right.
Okay, um, independent investigator status update. I did see the, um. Posting in the newspaper today. I have to cut it out and gave it to Jen, so she has it in her records.
And all the letters, the cover letters went out to the list that, uh, we had discussed at the, your last meeting. With the exception of the three that's, uh, something pretty given to me, it was just an oversight on my part that will go out.
And that there was some issue with what went up on the. Website for attachment A, which is all the rest ones. For some reason, with forwarding, it's. One of the email servers turned it into like a link with the link. So it's up, what's up? Jen put up what she received, which is only like one page. So I think I, I think I sent her what you originally sent me.
Then I can have to do it, thank you.
But I, I, I'll wait to hear from Jen tomorrow. She, if it got blocked by the town server, then. And you don't have it either.
Well, you know, Jen had directed me to the town's website for purposes of operative documents, so what I used was what was on the town's website. Uh, so if I could have the operative document sent to me, uh.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
I sent it to you right then.
Email problems. Alright, that's the update. And then the, the responses are due, I think, on the twenty third of September, and you're scheduled to meet the next.
Now you posted a special for the selectmen to the opening, so I just wanna make sure.
Sixty, six thirty. Yeah.
The letters of the phone, is that what it is?
Interested.
The letters of interest. Alrighty, uh, next item, the before and after school program, uh, did open, uh, first day of school. We were up and running. Um, wanna say we had approximately a dozen or so kids the, in the morning program. And approximately thirty to. Higher, it makes going higher, approximately forty kids, um, for the after school program. Um, you know, we're, we're looking carefully at the ratio of houses to students. I did talk to Kay to see what was happening with the school. She said none of her staff. Appeared to be interested in running. The program. Um, she had one person who apparently was interested in the before school, but didn't wanna do every morning. Um, so I guess at this point, she will have to be looking to, um, advertise outside of. Of staff to, um, to see if she can get any interest of people to, to do it.
So is it your understanding that she's still moving forward?
I, I guess she's still, you know, gonna do, uh, whatever she needs to do to see if she can get a program going, but right now there was no interest for the internal. Uh, staff. So.
For morning and for?
Right, yeah, yeah. Well, I think. Morning, they have a little more flexibility, because their contracts, they start school a little bit later. So, but they also contractual obligations with time that they have to be there. Um, with the commission, I did, if, if you saw the clock, some people said they didn't get the bulletin. Um, but the, the, um, notice was posted again for boards and commission vacancies. I wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity. To see it, because August is a lot of vacations and people are away, so, um. Wanted to make sure that, uh. People had a chance. I'm, I'm figuring maybe what we can do is hold a special board of selecting meeting, if you guys are amiable to that. Um, we'll give it about a week or so to see if we get any responses with the second posting. Um, yeah, I'm looking at maybe the nineteen.
What do we, what is this for? Are we still?
No, I, I moved to ten, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, we are on number ten. Um, but just giving a week or so, so that people have ample time to see it and respond if there's any additional interest. Um, and then we can have a, a meeting just geared toward that, um.
I, I just have real reservations with. Moving ahead on that, when we're spending all of these resources, we're doing what the town asks us to do. We're gonna have an investigation. Um, we're spending a lot of money on, uh, legal advice and we wanna do things right. And so I just think it's. Probably premature to move ahead in this way with Park and Red, because we're going to get recommendations from investigation. And I, I think, you know, putting. Putting energy into something that. I, I just feel like we're working against our own agenda with what the town was asked us to do, and I, I think it's premature.
Okay, um, what I'm also thinking is the, um. Town voting review committee does meet in October and potentially having them look at the code. Because right now the code reads up to seven. So you could have one or two people on the commission, the way it reads. I'm thinking that maybe we should be looking at potentially how, uh, some of the other boards. Are put together, say, uh, like the planning and zoning, where they have five regulars and two alternates. So that you can always have a meeting. You know, with, with five people, your forum is three. But if you happen to have. Three people out, but if you have alternates, you can still have a meeting. You rotate those people in, just like they do with the P and Z. Those people are usually at the meetings, and then if somebody's a no show. They sort of rotate around, um, to be able to have a forum. So you can still have a meeting. So, um, that, you know, might be something that the, uh, review committee could potentially be looking at to revise the, uh. The boat, and also looking at the terms. Um, is, is a two-year term sufficient? Should it be a little bit longer? Right now, with the commission, they all come in the same time. They run, they run the same two years. So should it be, um. Staggered terms, so that you're not losing everybody all at the same time. So these are just some things to, to potentially have the town public view committee looking at.
Well, I, I, I think we should appoint the, um. Park and Red Commission members. That's only, this is for issues going forward, not, not what happened a year, two years ago. Um, other programs, not, not necessarily just, uh, the before school, after school. Um, I don't think there's any reason, I, I, I did agree with the, you know, some people said, don't just. But throw some names out there, ask everyone, and then we'll have to go through the responses, but I, I, I don't, I think we should do it sooner rather than later.
We, I mean, we could certainly have a meeting and, and, and discuss it a little more and then, and decide there and then like.
At least, yeah, at least we should, uh. Send us all the.
Right, once, once, see if we get any more responses.
Resumes, but whatever expressions of interest and, and then we'll look at, uh, but yeah, I don't.
We candidly wanna hold a date so that we, we have it if we, um.
I would do a special meeting instead of waiting until early October.
Well, no, that's, that's what I'm saying, uh. Potentially hold the date.
And I, and just do that, to just be.
Right, address to that, yeah. Um, I was just looking at all the other dates and with other meetings and things going on. Would everybody be available on September nineteenth?
That's, I just wanna reiterate that. Uh, I'll look at my calendar in a minute, but I just wanna reiterate that I think it's. Contrary to, to, to the goal of doing this right, you know, the town's. You know, we agreed to do an investigation, and just part of that investigation involves recommendations, and part of that. Process involves what we will do moving forward, and I feel that it's really a disservice to what we're trying to do here. To say, let's get this other entity together and possibly do things that will contradict what comes out of, in the investigation. And so I just wanna say, I think it's unfortunate that, that's, um, where people seem to wanna, uh, move. Um, and I just wanna say that I, I object really heart, wholeheartedly on that. I think that we put a lot of energy into this. Uh, I, I certainly have, and a lot of other people have, and I think we should do it right. Um, and I, I don't think that that's, that's the way forward.
Yeah, man, I don't see having people who are willing to. Work on Park and Red, meaning that you, they, they won't listen to any recommendations that come out of an obligation.
Well, it's possible they could meet and implement whatever the changes they want, and I think it complicates everything. I think we are in a crisis, and I think we should stop and move forward with, when we have certainty about what to do. I mean, this, we, I mean, Paula's known since December twenty twenty-two. She could have convened the commission then. Why didn't she? I mean, I just think that. At this point, where it's my understanding that there were no lifeguards, you know, uh. At the late, because people didn't have the proper credentials or whatever, I could be wrong about that, but I just think that we are. We should, we should stop and do things right, and not take steps until we know what it is that we're doing. And I do think that doing it this way, that there could be possible contradictions and, um, just making things more complicated than they need to be. And I think that when something like this occurs. We need, we should proceed with caution, and we should, we should proceed when we have answers that the town wants. And, and so I just wanna say I object to this, this whole, this whole plan. I don't think, I don't see how it could be productive.
Well, I think it might be helpful, just with oversight of, like, with a commission overseeing monthly statements as to how the budget is being. Uh, spent, and you know, uh, there's, there's space.
When I, when I first got on this board, I was told that Park and Rep is the most productive program, the most profitable. That, that's a full. Program that this town has, and Paula told me that. And I sat in, uh, through Zoom on a board of finance meeting a couple of weeks ago and found out that that was not true. And so you had, you had, you had almost two years to, to do whatever it is that you wanted with the, with the commission. And you were okay with them not meeting at all. And so I think now to sit here and say, we're gonna do this now. Um, because you feel, I don't know, some public pressure. I, I just wanna register my objection that, um, I think we have an investigation that's. That's moving forward in terms of identifying who will do it. Um, and, and I think we should see what the results of that investigation are. Um, before we proceed in a way. I mean, I feel like this action, moving forward in this way, disregards everything that. Um, the, I mean, why do the investigation really?
I, I don't know why Anthony Mistrangelo's actions should prevent the town.
I did not mention his name, and I have no, no issue with him. That's not what I'm talking about. And if I'm not, yeah, and if I'm not clear, this has nothing to do with him. This has to do with Paula and the town's response. Has nothing to do with the defendant in, in that matter. At all. And so the town's response is actually, you know, the central issue here. It's the core issue. The, the town's response is in question, and now we're saying the town's gonna go ahead and do whatever it wants. I, I object to that. And, and if I can clarify that my comments have nothing to do with Anthony Mistrangelo. I don't know how else I can do it, but it has, what I've said tonight has nothing to do with him. I don't, I don't know. If I can be more clear.
Alright, I, I'm free on the nineteenth.
Um, can I have a motion to say?
Well, let's let Gina check your calendar.
What time?
Uh, is six thirty, okay?
Yes.
Alright, so a motion for special, I mean, we won't be posted until like the day before, so I mean. Uh, if we get any other clarification, we can certainly. We'll make sure that's available.
And can you send all the responses? And the ones you've received, and then send any other ones, so that we have time to redo them ahead of time.
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, motion.
So moved.
Second, no. I'm the second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
One day. Alright, uh, the Paul Park and Rep. Director's job description, I think that needs to be reviewed in order to put together an actual. Um, advertisement for a director, but I think Gina to, to go with your mindset a little bit. Um, I think we said we were going to hold off on that a little bit to see what, uh, the. Uh, internal review, uh, came up with.
Unless we're gonna completely eliminate parks and recreation as an activity that the town does. You're gonna have a park and rec director. There was, there was a park and rec director before there was ever before school, after school. I, I, we held off before, because we hadn't read the description and it was, uh, some.
Which I think was dated two thousand and five.
Yeah, when, when someone had done all.
Needs to be, yeah.
I reviewed, I don't know if you guys had a chance, there was, I mean, basically, it's, you know, it's, job descriptions seem to be, there were just a few things that. There was one that, uh, that went into requirements, and it's probably because the person preparing it. Just was interviewing the personality in the position and then wrote down the, just as you, like, under requirements, it has the. Um, service bus endorsement on driver's license. I don't know, that's really a job requirement or maybe a preference. And the other thing is it sits under requirements, it said you have to use a certain kind of software, which I don't think we're using anymore. And then again, I don't know if you wanna make it a requirement that they. Have used that software, because I'm assuming people can learn new software, so that would again go under. Preferences, but other than that, I wouldn't see a lot of things that really needed to be, usually you don't try to put really specific things into job, uh.
Sure.
Descriptions.
Uh, so there's really no.
But you wanna, you wanna put that on the agenda for the nineteenth also?
We could do that, sure.
Just.
Yeah, it could be the commission and the job description.
I just, I just have to say that I think that it's really unfortunate to even be thinking about posting a job.
And we don't necessarily have to post it. We just at least can review the job description and make sure that it's, you know, kind of up to date. Two thousand and five was a while ago.
So, or is Boris Lucking gonna be, be reviewing other job descriptions? Or just this one?
Well, we thought we'd review it before we posted it.
But we're not gonna. Are we gonna be reviewing other job descriptions? I, I don't see the point of reviewing this job, job description.
To.
I really don't.
Post the position.
Yeah, I don't see why we would post the position.
I think we should.
I think it's a disservice. And I don't know if people here or on the Zoom were listened in on the board of finance meeting, which I would encourage you to do. One person mentioned that that from two fifteen to four o'clock, there may not be an adult in the room. When these kids were in in the in the town program. And I I just think that. You know, that it's possible that that that's been resolved. What I was alarmed about is that nobody in the meeting had any answers to this. Question and that it's okay to be uncertain. Over whether or not an adult is going to be in the room for almost two hours when there's children being cared for in this town. And I just am amazed and shocked at the 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 comfort of with this liability that everyone seems to have. It's really shocking to me.
What, why wouldn't you want to hire somebody who has experience, who worked in another town and and who would know how to do things properly?
Because, first of all. The, what, we need new leadership. Second of all. I think putting someone, hiring someone under these circumstances is unfair. And third of all, I think that. That, you know, talking about. Hiring someone when the program is a mess from what I was saying. You know, and I don't know, maybe people here are okay with leaving their kids i- in their small children in a room within a program with no adults. I don't know. Because nobody in that meeting had an answer to that, and I was alarmed.
If you have problems, you get rid of the employees.
No. If you have someone sexually assaulting children, and then you have no adult in the room, you close the program is what you do. And I'm not saying, I know thirty families, forty families or whatever, who really need the care, and I'm not saying. I'm saying, what I'm asking is, has the town done anything at all in terms of looking for other options? I'm glad the school's looking for an option. The town has resources, the town is paying our attorneys a hell of a lot more money this year than we thought we would have to pay, right? Has the town thought about offering these families or, you know, a bus ride to the J C C? Has the town reached out to Surreyville? Has the town reached out to any other program? Has the town thought about why it may be important to have certified people watching the town's children? Has anyone thought about that? Has there been any, any, any movement? In in terms of any planning and looking to do something for the families of this town who need childcare? I don't think so, but I would love to hear an answer. And and, you know, just to say, we're going to operate in crisis mode. And 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 just say, we'll we'll find someone who's going to, who's going to accept the job like this at a moment like this. No, I don't think it's fair. And I think that the families in town with children in the program deserve more than what they've gotten. And and I think, again, I'm looking for an answer as to why it's okay and why everyone was silent. When it was reported that no adult would be in the room, or that there's a strong possibility that there would be no adult in the room. Why is that okay with the adults in the room now? Why is that okay?
I I don't, I don't know why. Hold on, I don't, I don't know why you have to answer. That question is, has nothing to do with, you you don't have to say I'm okay with whatever you just said.
No, I know, I know, I meant the people at that meeting. No one said a word. It was mentioned, and everyone just sat there, and no one had an answer to this.
This is, I mean, you mentioned, you mentioned, I agree, new leadership, so. No one is going to fix these problems. Right now, there's no park and rec director. The assistant director has been on leave for over a month. And there's no park and rec commission. Their terms all expired and they're not meeting. So that's, that's why I'm trying to get people in and rebuild it, unless we're, unless we're going to rebuild ourselves.
The answer. I think the answer is that we need a reboot. The town needs to do something for these families. And I'd like the town attorneys to tell us whether or not there's a benefit in terms of liability of shutting this program down. And I I would like to answer that question.
I'm happy to look into any.
No, 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 no. Tell me, tell me right now. You've thought about this before. We've talked about this before.
Questions like that, I just thought I'm happy to look into it, so I do a response.
I don't need a memo. I don't need a memo.
Gina, I'm not talking about the before school. I'm talking about all the other things that Park and Rec does, basketball and soccer and dance and.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the children's program, but I do think that the the whole program is a mess. And and I think the liability that we have as a town is unacceptable. I think the town should do more for its families that have children. And 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 they, and they, they easily could do that, okay? And I think that. I think that.
If you want to get your answers.
I'm not finished. No, I don't need answers from Nick. I, what I'm talking about is a meeting. I've heard what was said, and there was silence. When the issue came up about whether or not an adult would be in the room. Like I said in my comments, it's possible that that issue has been resolved. But there was a moment for, at the meeting where nobody knew, and everyone was okay with it, okay? And and I just want to say, Ben, this is the reason why a lot of people perceive you as being Paul's attorney instead of the town attorney, okay?
In order to made a proper respond, I need to understand the facts. You made a lot of statements, none of which are supported by the facts, because I understand it. If if you like to get the facts and I can understand the facts, I'm happy to look into any matter that you want. You asked for questions of. Liability based on your speculation of events.
Okay, my speculation.
Because you said there's going to be someone, there's going to be no adult present for a period of time.
That wasn't my question. My question is not to ask you if there's liability, if there's no adult in the room, because the answer is obvious. That wasn't my question.
Is there more liability keeping it open? Then what's your question?
We've, we've talked about, actually, maybe he wasn't there that day. My question is, in general, given what has happened since December twenty twenty-two. Is it a benefit to the town in terms of liability to shut the program down right now? Or or for there to be a transition for the town to do something for these families that they deserve, they deserve that from the town? And and it, yes or no, is there a benefit in terms of liability? I'm not talking about whether or not an adult is in the room. That is an obvious question that everybody here knows the answer to.
Have not provided enough facts to provide an intelligent response.
Okay, that that's it. I don't have any more questions about this. I think it's obvious and everybody knows. It's obvious. And I think we've been at enough meetings that you know what I'm asking. So, I mean, that this is, this is why. And, you know, I I have to point it out where I see it, and I regret the times where I remain silent on on these issues. I really do. And so I I would just have a a request for the town to look at doing something for these families. And I don't know, someone told me it was forty-ish families. And providing them with either a bus in J C C or, you know, having a time period where the. The town pays for the additional fee, whatever it would be, and so that there would be some. Bridge until the school program could be, could be open.
Moving along. Number twelve. Discussion and possible action on potential, potential funding for management review consultant as recommended by the county attorney. This is for all departments. This is not just for parking. This is across the board. All departments to look at how they're running. If they're doing right, if there's deficiencies, that kind of thing. So.
It's interesting how we have money for all of this other stuff, but nobody wants to do anything for these families that need childcare.
Um, I, I know Jen Kepathwick said, had handed something out at a previous meeting. In advance of a previous meeting about. A proposal to do something with the management study of just the park and rec department, but I haven't seen anything about. A proposal, scope for all departments. Certainly, you know, it's come up with the park and rec director that there was a. The town hired somebody about twenty years ago to go through all the. Job descriptions and update them, and probably they should be looked at, but I don't think that's exactly an emergency.
I want to know why, if you've been in office for about six years, why hasn't this been done before? Why hasn't the town attorney worked with you? And why haven't you looked at the policies in each department in town? Is six years not enough time?
When I came into office, there were a couple of departments that blatantly needed a look. And that was finance, and that was the building department. And I took a look at those and we made adjustments that we needed to make. My first two and a half months in office. I got rid of three. Top positions because they needed to be doing. A better job. They weren't doing their job, let's put it that way. So I made changes and to move things forward and to get things done. So.
You know, man, management studies, I I worked for companies and had them, usually they're looking for efficiencies and. How you can hire fewer people. And the impression I get is that's not what the town is looking for. It's very unusual to to pay a consultant. For a very small town staff. I mean, I could certainly see updating the. Having somebody take a look at the job descriptions, and I think at the time they were looking at the compensation. Because there was a lot of complaints about. You know, whether people were being fairly compensated. But again, I don't see that as an emergency that's coming out of the Mistrangelo matter. I don't, I don't know what kind of dollar amount you're talking about.
And that's certainly something that we could put on hold right now until the other interview, the other independent review is done. That's thoughts.
Yeah, and I, we want to see a scope of work and what the cost is. It's something that has to go to a town meeting or incorporate into a budget.
I certainly put that on, on board.
What are your thoughts, Gina?
I mean, I, I, like I said the last time that. We were asked to review someone's resume that was really not. Not a. It it was a resume that, that didn't list what the credentials were, so it was difficult to even really gauge what the person's experience was. So my, my position would be to not proceed.
And there was, I mean, there was, there was that, that individual's resume. I think he had worked for several towns, but mostly Newington. He had been the town manager there. And then there was another one that was sent to us, somebody who had retired from Meriden. And the problem is, Newington has about thirty thousand people, and Meriden's about sixty thousand. So I have a feeling they're going to come in and go, oh, wow, there's a lot fewer people here than I'm used to. I mean, if that's all they're going to do is, is say we need a lot more bodies, that's probably not going to go over too well.
That's true. That's true, but we can, we can certainly hold on this and.
I mean, it's something that should be pursued in the, maybe in the normal course, not in a, in a rush, in an emergency.
Number thirteen, item thirteen is a special possible action potential funding for legal matters beyond the scope of the retainer. And that's the Mistrangelo matter, basically.
I, there's no action to this body on that. At at this time.
Goes to the board of.
Well, we could inform people that are here what this agenda item really means, right? Yes, it is number thirteen.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I thought I was loud. Yes.
Too far away from it, sorry.
I know in the board of finance minutes from August thirteenth. There was a chairman, Huxley, will approach the board of selection at their next regular meeting regarding the seventy-five thousand dollar request, which would require a town meeting.
The way that, so, the way that it's listed on the agenda, then I, I mean, if there's going to be a referral to a special town meeting, then it would be. To consider an act on referring to a special town meeting, the recommendations of the board of finance related to. So the way it was listed.
Through you, okay. So this is basically to, the next time they have a town meeting is to refer this. But they have referred it to us to approve it to go to the town meeting.
So if you don't have a special town meeting scheduled, which I think we do, you might want to just. Postpone this and list it properly on the agenda, so that it would be promptly posted.
Okay. Okay, so we will. Move it to October with the proper.
So people here might not be aware that the town attorneys are seeking, I think, based on the board of finance meeting, I I was in, under the Zoom. Seeking seventy-five thousand dollars to, for their legal work and continuing to represent the town.
Well, just, just to be clear, we're not seeking any stated sum where, because there are a number of matters that fall outside the scope of the retainer. That we wanted to inform of the board of selection and the board of finance about. Related to a number of freedom of information, complaints that were filed, related to. A number of matters related to Mistrangelo that we have been engaged in since July. And we wanted to get ahead of the legal expense rather than behind it. So we wanted to keep. Both this body and the board of finance informed.
That's it. Seventy-five thousand is an estimate.
It's, it was a. Yes, I I think we, what I informed the board of finances is that I would keep. The chair of the board of finance informed on what I was doing and that I would send a copy of the monthly invoices to her attention so she. Could again be informed on everything that is going on with respect to the Mistrangelo matter.
Was there anything related to his access to town property that's?
That was the ex, the expansion of the P O, when he, and I don't have the date in front of me, when it's next. On the court's calendar is when I intend to appear before the court.
Is it this week?
Again.
Okay, okay.
I knew it was coming up this week, but.
Okay, a grant update. As far as ARFA is concerned, most projects have been identified and the spending is. Most projects are complete or being completed, so we can wrap up as much of the spending as possible by December. Thirty-first of this year, so that the money does not get clawed back. And steep, we are waiting for approval. With, from the state for our bid documents to go out. Because of the entity that has been assigned the project with the state. Everything must be approved by them prior to going out to bid for the expansion of the public works garage. The two Cabrera grants are being wrapped up and all, and final paperwork is being submitted to the state to close those out. We have spent just about the entirety of the seven hundred thousand dollars on various things with. The town in windows. And expansion of this room to include the air conditioning. The DeLoro grant of one million dollars is through HUD. Every time we make a change order. On the, on the grant, we need to resubmit the entire package to HUD for reapproval. That is what is slowing down the reimbursement process on the grant. We. Authorized a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar working capital for this, for the reimbursement. And we are close to that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in spent money. As soon as that money is reimbursed. Through the grant, we will move forward with the next phase of the project to continue the work. And our human services department has received approximately fifteen thousand dollars in leftover. Covid money that she is, that the director will be using for some new programs and enhanced programs for the senior center. And. The only other op, item going on is there, we were able to submit. The expansion of the lodge to turn it into a. Community shelter. Community shelter, emergency shelter, and that project is still floating through the approval process. We do not, we have not received a yes and we have not received a no. We're in a status call. The application has been submitted, but we are waiting for approval before, we do not know if that will be approved or not, but we have requested that through FEMA. Since it would be considered an emergency shelter.
That's it. I didn't, did you say, did you give an update on the Round Hill Road project? Cause I, I may have missed it.
I did not. There was nothing to report on Round Hill Road at this, at this time.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I skipped over.
Okay.
When is the trip grant due or has it been submitted?
We do not have any information yet on this year's trip grant.
Yeah.
Because they were looking to rewrite the program, the guidelines for the program.
Yeah, so. We have yet to hear anything back from them. Once we do. We will, we will move forward with it. So. Okay. We, um, may I have a motion to go into exec? Oh, I need an amendment, before we do that. I need an amendment to the agenda um, to add item. A new item sixteen and make adjournment seventeen, because we actually need to have discussion and possible action on the executive session item. I forgot to include that on the original agenda. So may I have a motion to add that item so that we can. Discuss and act on the executive session. Now, second?
Second.
On paper?
And I, I. Okay, now, Paul, I'd like to add, to make um, a motion in connection with what I was saying before. Um, I just would like to make a motion to have the town. Uh, look at. Wh- what it would cost and to have kids, the kids, parking rec kids bussed to the J C C or some other similar pro program. And to just do that research to see if that is an available option um, with the goal of closing the parking rec childcare. Program until uh, we get some answers um, that we're seeking in terms of the um, investigation.
I'm not gonna second that.
I'll, I'll second it. I, I, I thought it was a good idea with, with getting.
Parents and families that have already got this program in place.
All Gina was asking to find out cost.
I, I mean, I can certainly. Out and find out something like that, but I.
Can, can J C C handle the number of kids? What will be the cost to provide transportation? It's, it's just a request for looking into it.
Yes, I mean, I can do that without.
Did, Paula, did you hear the motion? I mean, it's, it's really irritating when I make a motion and you respond to some other motion that you think you've heard. Maybe I should go further, but for today, my motion is information, gathering information.
Yes, I can, I can gather information, but it.
I, 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 I mean, that's it. That's the motion for today. That's it.
Right, we can't make decisions without information. It's.
Right.
It's just like at a previous meeting, we asked you to consult with the.
And I did the next step.
So.
I did the next step.
The same thing, but this time looking at J C C uh, plus a bus from, from to V C S.
And having the town pay the difference.
Yeah, with the boss.
Right.
So the town would subsidize.
Right, just like the town is subsidizing the current program.
Explain.
I was at the, on the Zoom and for the finance, and I, and I heard that, that the town had to provide a hundred thousand dollars to the parking rec program.
That was prior fiscal years, not the way the program is, is set up for this.
So what year, what year did that happen? You mean prior, meaning two thousand and three?
No, I mean, up to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. For fiscal year twenty-five, the fees were set up for net mutual.
Okay, so it is fairly recent that the town was subsidizing the, the program.
She, she just said to see the thing. She made a motion, something like that. I don't know if it's on my.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I think you want to make a motion.
Well. I mean, it, it was in connection with what we were talking about with Park and Rec already. So it was already, it was already part of the discussion. For number nine. So, so my motion is in connection with item nine. Thank you.
Okay, um, second.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, on paper? All right, okay, we will look into the J C C.
For purposes of executive session, uh, for purposes of executive session, just to make sure that the record reflection is invited in.
Mm-hmm.
Which would include uh, myself, myself, attorney, attorney leader and the tax assessor. The tax assessor and attorney will be joining this. Next, uh, Betsy, Chris.
And she'll be at the Zoom?
Yeah.
Is anyone else invited? Do we need um, board of finance chair and?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I can have a motion to go into executive session with uh, so attorneys and the second.
I'll say.
Not in favor. I, I'm going to pause the recording. And it is. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. This shouldn't take too long. Uh, we now, we amended the agenda to add an item prior to us going into exec, executive session. And that is discussion and possible action on settlement of a tax appeal, and that is regarding. Uh, the Connecticut Water Company versus Town of Bethany. I will let you see this app. I'm gonna spill off the, the docket number. N, N, H dash C B dash two four dash six one four three four six two dash S. Um, this was regarding um, a case uh, with the, the Connecticut Water Authority's dam and their revow assessment. And um, so they made an appeal and we are approving, let me find that paragraph. Uh. Reducing the tax liability and then correct me if I'm wrong, but it's twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven.
What you're really.
Oh, you need a, you need a mic.
What you're really doing is agreeing uh, to the recommendation of the uh, tax assessor to uh, reduce the assessment.
By the twenty.
But by uh, I believe it was fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Right.
Yep. Okay.
Cause it's, it's, it's a tax appeal related to the assessment on the property. So it's really not a reduction in the tax. That's the consequence. It's a reduction of the assessment.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to approve? So move to second.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? There are none on the paper?
Aye.
Okay. That is it. And then uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second, on paper? All right, oh, we are adjourned at eight twenty-three. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.